All right, we ready?
Yes ma'am.
We call against the meeting for the City of Vernon, November twenty first, twenty twenty-two to order.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for this opportunity to be here. And we ask you, Lord, that you just have your hand upon us as we make decisions for the city. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, and eternal.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda carried. Mayor's report.
Randy Howell called today. He's going back up on the square again. Probably. I didn't take him.
What, I don't.
Randy Howell.
Then what now?
He'll be going up on the square again.
Really on the corner, I think.
On the corner, yeah, on the corner.
When's he gonna start?
Amendment to here is concerning parking lot at Sportsplex. I had a good conversation. We really don't talk about what was going through. We need Trey there, Trey couldn't be there. Trey's coming back this Thanksgiving, I'm meeting Trey, I'm scheduled with all three of us. But it was a good meeting, we seen things. I believe things will work out. He's seeing real, you know, willing to work. We'll just see how it goes. When I meet with Trey and him, I'll bring that back to you. You gotta feed my bullets. Concerning Michelle O'Kraus, the reappointment issue. This lady from the reappointment office called last Friday. Couldn't hardly talk to her, told her to come back today then. I'm just gonna read it out to you. She's claiming when she was filling in for the city clerk's parent, Karen White, she could not take off and go to the doctor because no one would be in the office. I told that lady, I said, incorrect, nobody would deny her medical treatment if she won't take off her stuff. No one has denied her that.
Mr. Gary, let me jump in in case you talk to her again real quick before I can get it. If you speak to her again, let her know that the time that she was here with Karen was higher, it's two days.
Yeah. The other one was... Ms. Kraus also stated that she was having undue stress because we asked her to do the clerk job, knowing she was not qualified to do it. I told Ms. Peters, no one has requested her do the clerk job because we knew she wasn't qualified.
Mr. Gary, again, Michelle can confirm this. We actually had a meeting with her and talked to her about that at length. And there's proof of that. And she was agreeable to do it. We even offered to, for her, just do her duties and get somebody else, and she was agreeable to do it until we could find some.
Correct. The lady could not send me a copy of the... We do not have a copy of what that lady said in her office anywhere. Can't find it. She would not send it to me. Let she give Candace the portal, and the portal's under construction. I'll let Candace finish that out.
I did try to go in there. She said the only way that we could see the documents that Karen submitted in rebuttal of the reappointment was to go into the portal and look, but the site she gave me was under construction. It pulls up, but then when you click on the link, it was under construction. So I reached out to Gary because I know they've got to have a login for what they... Because they like pay the reemployment or do the reemployment for the city. So I'm waiting to hear back from him so that I can bypass the broken one and go in and see.
Jeremy has the facts, the response that we filed on behalf of the city because we couldn't get into the portals. We have a fact header.
Okay.
It's had issues.
So, but there you... I mean, we have access to a copy of what's facts here, right?
What?
The revol-
We filed, yes.
Because I can't find anything in her file. Let's see.
It's not in her personnel file.
We have her resignation letter.
Is this so she can or cannot do unemployment in the interim?
Freeway update. They must, uh... We've been in contact with the lady from FEMA Tuesday morning. And the small items that come to buy a hundred thousand dollars. Somebody had turned in paperwork saying they've already been completed, but they have not been paid for them. So we do have that money coming. And if it's done by a contractor, she's trying to find out who that contractor was. The ones that wrote the request on the City Department of Commerce. And we did spend money on that, we purchased COVID, but the trade proceeding for that. The City of Rhodes, Traverse Hill Station, that's been... She sold her work and getting done. And that's from a long time back, not like a judge done. Need whether there's money, there will be a gift for the actual issue to check. I've got one more page. Got two more pages? And their number, they'll give us one number, but the number this lady does not match our number on the, like, the item number. Anyway, citywide re-removal. That's not yet, you know, that scheme happened in figured out. But anyway, on the thing myself, we're gonna get paid about a hundred thousand dollars worth of it. Just waiting. Waiting on how long it'll get checked. But on far as the theme of the gymnasium and the sewer yard. What we're hearing is we cannot have overlap projects. Not the grants and the people. That's not good. Gotta be, this y'all making it step forth from that. But we can't pay them a lot of, and our grant money go up to the city.
Mr. Gary, this is the T, I've already sent it to Fred. That's not Fred y'all, by the way, that's his son, David. And they also look at, um, and there would be some overlap, some of it we know we had to have done, or the plant wouldn't be functioning, but those go back to two thousand seventeen. So finding receipts invoices to turn in to get paid from that time period would be a different story.
That's all I got on that. The other one is, uh... The wooden fence, I dropped it on first. I said, I was sick last week, so they get back with it. They said they get back with me, but I'll get ahold of them all. It needs to come down. The other thing is, let, there you go, there you go. I'll talk about, you know, talk about Yellow Jacket Drive a little bit.
Sure.
Hey, Mr. Wrong.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good evening.
So Yellow Jacket Drive is underway. I have released the geotech to get started, so once they get started to do their work, then we'll do all our work on it, work on it. Background broke in. And I expect that project probably to be designed at least enough to bring back to the city and let, let staff, the mayor, whoever, push the year, you know, Jamie works on that. The county has agreed to front the money for that. That's gonna be up the, uh... We'll get reimbursed the county when we get paid.
Yeah, but it's the county, they may put that in by...
They're supposed to don't have a meeting, but I'm...
Well, you know, because they always say what they're gonna do, and you know what they do, they wind up not doing it.
What if they do all that, because they've paid over, they've done it.
I know sometimes you have to watch them. Be very careful, because they're saying, if they're gonna do something, then they don't do it. Again, we go depending on them to do it, and they don't do it. We need to make sure that they're gonna do that. I don't know how, but I'm just saying, sometimes they say they might do stuff.
Well, if they do it, we have to bet that they, they just, they're agreeing in front of the money.
The county's paying the property company to get it done. The risk on that is you got, potentially it's a short job, and you could have a contractor do half or three quarters of the work in one month, and you have to pay a big chunk of ninety thousand dollars out of pocket to, to get it reimbursed. And so being able to get the county to cover that for you, and look at that.
Because I don't know anything about stuff like that, may I ask you a dumb question?
Sure.
So Yellow Jacket Drive is just like that lane that comes in front of the school here, the parking lot. How will that, how do you go between the two and make a, so that it's not so obvious that our parking lot is shoddy too?
Well, parking lot's not actually in the scope of work. The scope of work is from that point south.
Right.
How would you do that to redo your parking lot? Well, there's a couple, there's a, several different ways, but probably the, probably the easiest way would be just overlay the entire parking lot so that it's, that'd be flush. Obviously, Square came in there and overlaid that one kind of through part, you know, it's got another inch, an inch and a half of asphalt, so that's why it looks like it's built up. You can build it back down, but then you're just right back where you started, so you can just take the rest of the parking lot. You could probably feather it in, you know, a little way.
Thanks.
But does anybody know, is that a road or is that a parking lot?
It's a road right out there.
Is it a road or is it a parking lot? Because here, they got parking spaces, but then there's a road like it.
When I was in school, they, they had concrete, a little barricade between the parking lot and the road.
Correct.
They took that up, I don't know when. I always been a road there. Used to have a big parking lot on that side. There were actually two stores over there.
I can.
School kids, so they were, always have been a road right there.
Yeah, so basically the lane between the parking spots closest to the building and in the parking lot is the road.
Is the road. Yeah. It had like a concrete little, I was in school, it went down. The project that's getting redone is from that, really from the curve there, south to whatever.
Big fan.
And they're bad. We'll, we'll give you five bucks a piece if you put a group there, separate.
Uh, it can be done.
Oh, boy, okay.
You want to talk about the septic receiving station?
Sure, I'm up here in my flow.
So I think the mayor mentioned this previously, that y'all had received the legislative appropriation for the septic receiving at the Westwood Creek plant.
It's number four, no, sorry.
So paperwork's coming in at this point. Apparently the paperwork had come in previously, but I guess it got lost in shuffle between the different clerk overlaps. So Candace sent it to me. That paperwork needs to be turned back into the state by, I think it's December ninth is the mandate date. We got a couple of weeks to get that done. It's nothing terribly difficult, it's just filling out the, fill out some contact information and a little bit more information about the grant work itself. So I, once we can send you that, I'll send back the proposal for our engineering services to do that grant work, get that paperwork together, and also to go in to start the design since there's also, as soon as you get the agreement, there's gonna be a timeline when that money has to be spent. So the grant is for, I think, a million seventy-five thousand, if I'm not mistaken. Within that million seventy-five is my fee, so it's not costing me anything out of pocket. That'll probably be a reimbursable grant as well. So we might want to think about talking to the county again when we get closer to construction. During design, I don't think you have to put too much money, but during construction, it might get a little expensive work. But, you know, but... The county, the way we are paid from the past, we, we used to get money up front, that doesn't happen anymore. The contractor, I believe it was in their contract, bill us, and we would not pay them until we receive, we send that bill on to the state, we build the state, and we not pay them until we got the state. So that leaves your contractor out holding the bank, but they understand that. That was the way we could really do it.
You could put money like that in a contract if you have a flexible contract.
Yeah, most of them are.
That's a, that's a part. So instead of saying you'll get paid in thirty days as a contract, you can say you'll get paid in sixty days, which gives time for the pay request to come in, get approved, to send off to the state, you can come back. By the way, that's almost the way the city can do that.
Yeah, the small cities, like the neighborhood rent, you can get, they call drawdowns, but on a lot of your mitigation funds, micro funds, you're gonna have to pay upfront, provide invoices, pay checks, and get reimbursed as fast as you go. So the city's gonna be fronting a lot of money coming up on these grants. I don't go out with you tonight which ones, but...
So that's kind of a whole nother set of issues there that work out. And I've seen other cities set up kind of a fund, just specifically roll money in and out of, of course you gotta have money to put in the fund to start it, yes, that makes it a little more complicated. But I believe, mayor, if I'm not mistaken, and I, I think you have a copy of the agenda, but I assume that you want the council to approve the task order to start working on that legislative appropriation project. Where, where are we at on the generator scatter system, maybe? I, I'm sure David's gonna go over that when he comes up. Proposal's out there for y'all to sign, but I don't, I don't know that it's really time yet. You can sign it now, but until the environmental's done, really can't get to it. Can't get to it, so I...
I don't have that much of the information.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mr. Gary, this is number four. You're asking us to approve, motion to approve moving forward with this.
So that's the new grant from Tank at Westwood Creek. Yeah, I'm not looking at it, but I assume it is for legislative appropriation, legislative appropriation.
What he just talked about, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, so I can make a connection.
I'm trying to interpret the same thing. This is for the, the grant from Tank, that Westwood Creek plant. And the appropriation.
That's what it's for, I might not have it worded...
Maybe it's wrong there?
But it's for that.
Okay.
So it's for the sewer receiving that he was talking about?
It's so that, like the septic companies, they used to dump, now they can dump, they can empty, the city can charge them because the city's losing a lot of revenue on what they used to get when they did that.
Wasn't all of that, but there's a response letter that has to be submitted by December the ninth, and we don't have another meeting.
Yep.
So we'll discuss that on number four then.
Okay. I'll be here soon. I can answer more questions. So I'll get back any quick.
Okay, attorneys report?
I don't have anything.
Clerks report?
Okay, I think I put it in here for y'all to see, but Friday was a little, um, we were putting out fires all day Friday, but we didn't have water hoses, we were stomping on them, okay? It was rough. So, so, um, anyway, the survey for the Sportsplex, and they'll, David may touch on that, I'm not sure, but before, that's the small cities grant for fifty thousand dollars for the Sportsplex. They came back and said we had to have a survey. Ms. Vicki has reached out to every survey, I think it was four or five in the area. One responded fifteen thousand. There also has to be a survey at the end of the project. Fred's fees or Fox Enterprise's fees are sixty-five hundred. So I wanted to see what y'all want to do with that because there's not any of the grant left, hardly. There's a little left, so I don't wanna, I wouldn't want the city to give up anything that they can get, but y'all better decide how you want to proceed with it.
The grant couldn't pay for more than about a thousand dollars in the survey. So you would have to, um, pay the difference because they don't allow you to go beyond that for survey services or administration services.
So that's not coming out of the grant, that's coming out of the city.
Anything on top of the thousand dollars would be...
Be about fourteen thousand just for the first one, right? Because there's a thousand?
It's a fifty thousand dollar grant, it's Florida Recreation, FERC, Florida Recreation Development, y'all have it for, it's for the parks. But yeah, you would, if, you would take a, a large percentage amount for the survey, would have to come from the city fund. It wouldn't, you don't have enough money in the grant, or they don't allow the grant to exceed that. It's got four surveys, it's supposed to be meant for recreation development.
This is the same grant that's been in the works for...
Two years, probably. One of the first ones that we applied for once our audits were finished.
And that, this has just now come up, or we just now found out about it?
Yeah.
We, uh, we sent a package into them, a new package back in July to the state. I don't think it's from two years ago, because they're only three-year grants, but...
Well, it was one of the first, it was when I was mayor, so however long that was.
But the state has had to turn over the DEP. They asked for the package again last month. We sent them the package again last month. We had a survey from two thousand eighteen, I believe, or nineteen in the package, from your previous grant. They decided this week or last week that they don't want to accept the old survey, they want a new survey. This just came about last week, but, so...
What was the reasoning why they wanted a new survey?
They said the survey's too old. The new staff sends a survey's tool, it's not acceptable.
It's recorded at the courthouse. Is there a hardship, we can claim on this?
There is no hardship, I mean, we can go back to them again, but there's no...
Do we know who did the survey?
Excuse me?
Who did it the first time? Maybe they could recertify without it being fifteen thousand?
Maybe, I don't have, I don't know who did it for some, but I'll look and see.
Never mind.
Can the county do a survey for you? Y'all looking into that? They don't, they gotta do the survey. Some counties do, that's reasonable. It seems like it should be some kind of hardship, so that's kind of crazy.
You keep going through the same thing, so, I mean, over three years, how, how much has it changed? What's changed?
Nothing, they made me update all the title work, too.
Yeah, they're required, they have new staff in there, they got new requirements, I mean, you know, we can try, see and send an email request on what our options are, but at this point, that's, that, my understanding of that was what they're, they requested. At this point, with the survey.
Well, my concern is that fourteen thousand dollars, and they're going on another survey?
Yeah, it's gonna be a second, a closeout survey.
The same thing, that's gonna cost at least fourteen thousand.
That's thirty-two, thirty-two thousand.
Twenty-eight?
That's, that's twenty-eight, then plus the, I mean, you get one.
Well, the sixty-five hundred comes out of the grant, right?
Yeah, it's grant, grant writing and administration and closeout.
So we're gonna get half anyway?
Oh, we have a question.
On that one, we need to make a decision in the next few months, or month or so, but the closeout date, completion date for construction on that one is, you have to be done with the project, with construction complete by April twenty twenty-four. Your options there, one would be, you wouldn't be penalized if you decided to turn down the grant. That would be one option, or the other is to come up with a difference for the survey that if, we'll clarify once again with DEP, that they're gonna, you know, you can't use the old survey, just get the writing, but that's their stance right now.
So we can't discuss, is it the next workshop and not, and the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you gotta have the construction done by April twenty twenty-four.
I know that's far as we're sponsored.
Yeah, I think so, because they said this one. And we'll get clarification on how the survey can be, why they're not allowing it.
Yeah, that doesn't really make any sense.
We've had, we've gone through so much staff up there that it's, it changes. Like I said, we submitted this in July, they've lost it, we had to submit it again, and now they come back requesting this additional information.
They did, which cause when they got surveying down here?
I don't know who did the last survey, I can look and find out, but I'm not sure what the company did.
I believe it's Amson and Associates, I think.
So it's only Jennifer, the next workshop, please, Candace?
Okay. Okay, then, we've got, I didn't get this, well, I knew about it, there was a water leak at a residence, and she didn't call until Friday afternoon to tell me that they had gotten it fixed. She'd been emailing back and forth, but they couldn't get a plumber. An adjustment's one oh three fifty. They don't live at the place, and so they found out when they got the super high water bill. It's an outside pipe, and they do have it fixed now. So I, I didn't have it in there for y'all to approve because I didn't get it in time.
Okay, so let's not add that to number eight. You have the account number?
I do, if I can read it. It's zero one, zero 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 zero, one five one one, zero zero nine.
You have an address instead?
Is that Long Jackson?
No, it's on Dawkins. Twenty-eight sixty.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, and then, um... I'm not sure how many know, but on Friday, um, there was some construction, well, they're working on Ebenezer Road. There was some issues with travel on Church Street, communication going back and forth if they could go on Pompey or Church Street. Long and short, the manhole got busted, cracked in half, and a man on a bicycle ran into it and had to call an ambulance, and he was injured. I've reached out to the county to let them know that their insurance may be addressed because they would have broken the manhole with the dump truck. Also reached out to our insurance, I haven't heard anything back. The issue is, we haven't heard from the gentleman, and I cannot check on him because we have no name. We have a case from the sheriff's department, and they don't have a name. And HIPAA laws, they, Jason was not allowed, the ambulance driver couldn't tell Jason who it was. He was there, but he was already in the ambulance. So that's, I can't find out how he's doing.
The only thing I know is, is possibly the cops didn't get to a house on Channing Grove. I don't know exactly who it is. He was in the ambulance, I got that.
But we have contacted the county to let, so that they can let their insurance know, and then we've contacted our insurance as well. And that's all that I can remember at the moment.
Anybody else have anything in this cabinet? Recreation report?
All I have, we've met, and I brought up the Christmas event, and the board is okay with moving forward with it. They don't necessarily like the Christmas bizarre name, so we may name it like Christmas on the Square or something, but other than that, they're, they're good to go on what y'all decided on. So ten, ten o'clock to three.
All right, we'll go back, circle back. I haven't found Santa yet. I did reach out to Annette. She did say that he said he wasn't going to do it this year, but she's going to ask him for me. I had to go through... I tried to find the one that Ms. Eileen always asks, and I had to go back through our stuff, so I can't. Anyway, I don't have his phone number. I haven't his name, and I'm trying to find out if I can get a phone number.
Who is it?
Bill Evans.
I got all my husband's.
Well, she texted him, if you have her phone, because I went back through all my, her stuff.
I got her phone.
Please, okay, thank you. If, um, Annette's brother-in-law can't do it. Annette's brother-in-law can't do it.
So Jim here, and I know we discussed this, but I really don't remember what we discussed about it. The rec is gonna take over the Christmas on the Square, the Zola?
Yes ma'am.
And did we, we had feet for that free spot? But I don't remember what it was.
Twenty-five, twenty-five by ten by ten is what we talked, but now we may do a little bit more if we decide to do any of the food vendors. Um, so, or, or if we allow them, we may charge food vendors more than twenty-five dollars, but we, we, we didn't decide that, that night for sure on that. But right now it's twenty-five dollars for a ten by ten. And I'll go over there tomorrow and mark them out, count how many I have, and create my map and everything like that, and I'll have the graphics done tomorrow too, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Jim? Public Works Report.
Alright. Let's see, uh, Churchill H. Wardline is in, we haven't hooked it up yet because they won't be there. Gary's uh, the dogger's gonna meet him there, we'll be running the line again, everything's good. And then whenever he gets there, we'll hook it up, so they flush it out, I guess what we wanna do, so they're happy with that.
Question, at last meeting you said that, so do you know when they're going to be able to meet with y'all, so y'all can finish that up?
Whenever she's ready. We done the line, what day we do the line? The, the, that's Thursday, and then I let her know Saturday, then we done it. So, and she said that they wanted to do it Sunday, but I couldn't get a hold of her Sunday, because um, she wouldn't answer. So today went down there and I've got a message to get with me, because I guess Gary's out of town, I guess, or something.
Well, I don't know how the resident council feels about it, but I think it should be something that's done during work, regular working hours, it shouldn't.
Well, we was gonna do it Sunday, that way they, they have the deli there, they're letting open, because they want to flush the lines and everything, but whatever y'all think, I'm good with doing their work hours. I mean, I can hook it up and flush it, but they're just, they're worried to death about it.
Does council have an opinion, or am I the only one that does on that? I mean, when they work on weekend, you know.
They work, they have to pay overtime, so they should, it should be done here in a week, every day.
So if you just let her know that and said you can't get her to set you that, see if you can get that off the book.
Okay, alright, um Church Street, yeah, the dump truck's running on Church Street.
And Pompey.
Yeah, they're, they're still on Pompey.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're doing, but they were on there today.
I didn't see them today.
Friday, Friday afternoon.
I didn't see them today.
Two fluid pallets of patch on that.
I didn't see them today.
And we're wasting money.
But I wasn't looking.
And they run the dump trucks destroyed. They were on there today? I don't know.
I didn't see them today.
Did they have, did they have a plan all that day?
I saw them, they were there today.
They were?
Call it, we'll call it, yeah, we can get them going. And this may not be something we can do, maybe we'll show you next, is there any way that we could put like a road closed, a road closed, uh, except for, you know, people that live on that street?
You can, you can.
Yes, um Well, should the local traffic only?
Yeah.
The thing, the thing is the county has agreed to holla this off. We asked a lot out of the county, and when they were gonna repay Church Street, I know the dump trucks will be the dump work.
I'm talking about Pompey.
I mean, they're not, they're not supposed to go down Pompey at all. They were till, up to last Thursday or Friday, when Joey called, I called him, yeah, it's gone.
Joey had called me and asked me if I seen him, I said, yeah, we do, we do about.
But that's what I'm talking about, a married age except for local traffic, that way the dump trucks, unless they run over the the big sign, I mean gotta keep them off of there, and then we really can't keep them off of Church Street, and I don't wanna offend anybody either, but dump trucks have no business on Pompey, personally, that road is so narrow, you can't hardly pass on it anyway, regular for them. And, you know, we are gonna repay Church Street, I know they're causing damage, but there's already damage there.
Can they repair the, can they dump some rocks or something when they get done, to at least make it drive?
They should probably put some in on that, that's what they need, yeah.
Maybe that, something we could ask them.
I'll talk to the engineering department about that. Then I'll make a phone call too. Alright, um the, uh, Ms. Quinn was talking about, you were talking about Christmas lights, bringing this white lights?
Yeah.
Now, what, I wanted to ask, what are you wanting to do, the trees?
Just the trees.
Just the trees.
Okay. Do we wanna go around the?
Yeah, okay.
And the building? Yeah. What about here? City hall too?
Well, yeah, of course it might be.
What, last one?
That's what I wanna make sure, alright. Before you go any further, those trees that we've asked to be cut, do we wanna go and cut them out? Get rid of them. Alright. Um, we had an issue at Springfield? Today the pump went out, that we, we ordered this ball, it's under warranty, and they'll be out here tomorrow to fix it, but all we need to we'll check that. Yeah, and then check valves, yeah. We talked about it in workshop, check valves. Nice pullback? Yeah. Yeah.
How much were that, Jim?
Um
Sixty-eight hundred for the check valve?
Six thousand and forty-one, thirty-one.
Um, you gotta add that four hundred to that, for, I did include the gas. The gas, the gas is about four hundred. That's part of what else was talking about the DEP, those, that's.
Alright, and then last, I know this is on the thing, on my employment thing. Is it possible that I can get two people, or one full-time and one, and that's for one full-time and one part-time? Because if I can get two, that, that'll leave me where I set the plant. But if I got one, it, it would help me out, I mean, I don't know money-wise, can we do two? So I figured I'd throw that at y'all.
Um, I, I would like to see a, another full-time and a part-time or temporary, but I don't know if we have the money for it. I would suggest going ahead and advertising for employment.
Yeah.
I don't know if it needs to say full-time and part-time maybe, and give us a chance to.
Yeah, because we need to look and see.
Yeah, that's, I figure we did, but I figured I'd ask, no one would go ahead and do it. It'd help me out, that way I can stay at the plant, and it'll help a lot, so.
So when this is advertised, or, um, how this council wanna do it, I know in the past we've allowed both figureheads, um, the clerk and the public works director to hire a temporary person, are we going that route this time, or do we wanna wait until we get it advertised and get some applicants in?
You talking about on the part-time?
No, just for.
No, I'm saying just, just for now, and I don't even know if that's something that y'all need right now, y'all would have to tell me.
You know, because right now, I mean.
I mean, it's not the middle of summer, I know that, but.
We're not, I don't wanna say we're darn need, because then tomorrow it'd be.
Yeah. So.
If it comes up where I have to have somebody, I'd like to have an option, but.
Y'all probably paying Jason, not to cut your pocket, but, but y'all probably paying him as much overtime as you could hire a part-time person for?
Yeah.
Honestly?
So let's go ahead and get it advertised, and if you need
Yeah.
A temporary.
Yeah.
And I don't hope anybody's turned any, any applications off, I know we had the rest of the board card a while back before, we needed any audit, but I know that several people have asked about its termination, but I don't hope anybody's turned anything.
Two people have come by. I have not had one return. That I've seen, and then there are some on file, so we could also look at those.
Yeah, and we've had a bunch of people ask, about the carnival week.
Okay, well, it's not, like I said, I guess, as far as council's concerned, if something major comes up and you need to hire a temporary, just let it be known, and in the meantime, we get it advertised and see how many applicants would come in.
Okay. That's all I got. You want that?
Yeah. You got that?
No, I did. We're good.
Good, anybody have, have anything else with Jason? Alright, fire chief's report, thank you Jason.
Thank you.
Well, we got approved for the air pack. I guess we're waiting on the purchase.
Can you hear him?
The purchase of another air pack?
Yeah, I wanna make sure, Michelle's going over the paperwork, just to make sure we didn't have to have an ordinance, and I think we're, we're good.
A resolution.
Yeah.
I certainly can tell.
So we just need permission to go ahead and order those, because we have to purchase them, and then they'll pay us that.
Yeah, but we've already agreed and voted on that last year.
Okay.
Of course I know.
We just got this e- email from the um, state coordinator saying that within thirty days of the contract execution, that we have to submit the copy of the vendor quotes, um, itemized list of equipment to purchase, and then a copy of the agreement, and then he has some parentheses, contract ordinance resolution, or city slash town charter. Which isn't anything that was required in the grant agreement, that's, that's something new on me, um.
What I'm asking is, didn't we approve this last year, and with those funds that we set aside, that he was requesting, that those air packs were in that, weren't they?
I don't, I don't.
No, I just applied it in there.
Because sir, it's not, what I'm saying is, it's not anything we have to vote on, we just tell you.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure before I spend forty-seven thousand dollars that we're, we're good, it's a reimbursement. Okay.
And I don't know, only other thing is the brush truck, we and Darian need a brush truck. It's to the point where dispatch only told us first, they called mutually, then called to us, so.
Yeah, I know, you've been, we've been having this issue with the brush truck for quite some time, and we want you to have one too, and my question is the money that was received for that is about a third of what this process on here, for distribution.
That, that truck's fully decked out though.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the money was along the same amount that we got for the city truck, and I mean, we got, what, twenty, just under twenty-eight thousand dollars, and so my question is, where is the rest that's gonna come from?
So he, he's act, he wants to know if he can use ARCA funds, because that is something that's approved from ARCA funds for rescue, all of those things are approved under ARCA funds, so that's what he's, that's what he's wanting to ask, right?
ARCA.
So.
Cause I mean, we can go with the base model truck like the city, but you probably don't put sixty dollars on with the stuff on it.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to figure out where.
Yeah, where the money's held.
Where, where we can get the money in. And my concern is, is that we're not really sure at the moment how much of those ARCA funds are
clear?
Set aside.
Right, set aside, plus we gotta figure out the money we spent on Sewer Yard, are we gonna be able to recover that over the grant?
And the, at the end of the last meeting, candidate, we got some information on that, so we may.
Yeah, I think that, was it you that already reached out to ask if we could get reimbursed for some of the things we're spending money on at the plant now, that fall under the grant?
The grant that we realized that we got?
I think we did talk about that, it was an email floating around, David, you recall that?
I know under the uh, CPG grants, the city you cannot get reimbursed for previous work. We did not, under that special appropriation, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there was so I think the answer to that was work at the plant, which would have been the mitigation grant is, is not, or has belonged to be reimbursed at this point, if I'm not mistaken.
And they're, and I'm, I don't believe they're gonna reimburse you for previous work. Whether it, you know, mitigate, I mean, I'll look into it, but that hasn't, that hasn't been the, in the past, that they haven't allowed that.
I don't, I don't have that email handy.
I don't either. I can pull it up though, I can pull that email.
I'll make it, I'll look into it, but this is my previous experience, they haven't allowed it, I, I wasn't involved in that email chain this time.
Yeah, it was Fran and me and Dale.
So two things we need to find out, we need to find out if there's gonna be a reimbursement, but we need to find out exactly how much money has not been allocated from ARCA. I know that, that some of it's already been spent towards the fire department, I believe, uh wasn't that on, that we used some of the ARCA funds, or have we set up ARCA funds? Radio or something?
For what?
There was something that was allocated.
Oh, yeah, the radio. Yeah, I did use it on the radio.
So if we could just, can we just find that?
Remember how much that was? The radio, that was like twelve dollars, yeah.
And I can see for sure.
And the other thing that we gotta remember is what's allocated for the budget shortfall, and then we should know where we're at. So we can, I know you've been extra patient.
There's already been a large portion of the funds from ARCA that transferred into the general fund. I don't know what the transfers were for, but I know that there was a large amount.
Lee should be able to.
Yeah, I'll have to get with him, and I would like if the council doesn't mind for him to come today, so that we can sit and go through all of that, he's really busy, but it would help a lot since I came in the middle of all of it.
Well, yeah, and we, we need to know where we're at with this.
But I don't want to pay him, but I really need to sit and go through this stuff with him.
And well, he's gonna have to come at some point, because we've got no, we don't want to.
Okay.
Do, do, how much was it that the county gave us, twenty-seven dollars or what?
Uh, twenty-seven. Chad, I'm talking my head, I don't know, I saw it somewhere, but I don't think it's in the packet. It's, it's just.
I don't, I mean, I don't have it, I don't even know.
This is what the county paid us, for the brush truck. I think which was, I think they gave us like twenty-six or something for the city truck. And we just gotta find out what, what we've got in ARCA that's not allocated, and if we have enough to do it. And also I know this looks like a big price, but it's really not, not what he's getting, but I, is this the only?
That's it, that's the cheapest, uh, most up-to-date one, I mean, we can pay for like an eighty-nine, for like twenty-five, but gonna be in the same, same hole of trying to fix it.
While she's getting with Lee, and we're figuring out what we got, and finding out if we're gonna be reimbursed on any of what we spent at the plant, if you could keep looking, and see if you can come up with one or two more around.
I found them, it's like a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I, I don't want anything any higher than that. Something comparable, or, you know, a little lower, give us a chance to see what our numbers are, and then we'll.
Did you try to drill me?
Yeah, I tried, yeah, I tried, they said they stuck on it.
They stuck on this. But if you buy the truck for twenty-seven thousand dollars, and you buy a truck, and you turn around, there's another sixty, you just bought the truck, so we're just gonna have to try to figure out a way to come up with that sixty thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, I, we just gotta know.
Got to see where this money is still.
And I appreciate you being so patient, we have, I mean, you know, we thought this truck was on its way last year, so anyway. Let us get the work on, and maybe by the workshop, we'll have some information. You got anything else?
Oh, no, thanks.
Okay.
How about your Christmas party?
Uh, we need to stop.
Yep.
I hope we can give them a, open the meat with those, where the pump's at.
Have mine go for a brush truck.
You two talking. Oh, okay. So we can work number two off until the work's off. Uh, do we have any public participation? New business, number one, Mr. Fox, that based on. New business. Number one, Mr. Fox, update on the grant.
Sure you're gonna want to talk.
Uh, good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Fox, Fred Fox Enterprise. I'll give you an update tonight and questions you have on the projects that we're working with, Fred Fox Enterprise working with the city. The first one is, it's already been funded. It's your small city CBG neighborhood project. The grant amount is six hundred fifty thousand. There's no local match required. Agree any date of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The project involves rehabilitation of both wells and wellfield number one, including placement of the pumps and holder, diamond transfer sways, electrical panels, wiring, conduit, laundry system, skater system, and chloride disinfection system. That's primary number one. And also under that project, the six fifty, the city burn closing, we're paying property thirty-one linear feet of Church Street, Wood Moss Hill Road, and Pompey Avenue. We've been working on the environmental for the project, environmental review. We've come across several parcels that are near to the project that are contaminated or brownfields. We've got a D E O staff, we've got some paperwork together. They're not really working on this too much. They're not very familiar with it. So, they want us to compile the information we have, submit it, and then they'll come back to the company if they're working on that. Also, one of the lift stations near the gas station is what they call the explosion zone, meaning the gas station's close enough that the lift station tank was to explode, or the gas station tank was to explode and hit the lift station, vice versa. Um, so, we have to go do a burn or undergrounding of the tank on that project. So, we won't talk to the D E O on that. Maybe we'll talk to you a little bit about that. We'll try to resolve that issue with the state. We do have to go to a website that tells us that you have to be a certain distance. But in the calculated topics of fuel tank, how far away is the gas station tells you you can do the explosion distance. To address that, you know, often it's either a burn or an underground tank. So, we're working on that. Under that program, emergency program, you can't proceed until you get your environmental review completed to go to design. They've come out in the last thirty days. The state said, we're gonna do that as of now because of just many delays in projects because the environmental is so depth across the state. Because when you've got environmental issues like brownfields and stuff, that they will allow you to what they call uh, strategic exemption approval. We submitted the paperwork for that, received a strategic exemption allowing you to go to design. But the city would have to front the design costs, and until we got the environment, you would still get reimbursed, or it just will not on right away if you want the environmental release is completed. So, maybe an option you'll wanna think about if you want to move forward to design on the project. If not, to get paid for the design as we go, everything's the environmental clearance. We can do that about another, as you said, another thirty days, thirty to sixty days. Early Jan-, uh, late January, we'll go. We get the environmental release. Move forward to design. So, if you wanna move forward quicker than that with the design, the city would have to front it and then get reimbursed after you get the environmental release in Jan-, late January. Or if you wanna wait for the design, you pay for the grant. Either the way, it's paid for the grant, but do it when the grant does a drawdown, then they pay the engineers, they go, instead of the city fronting the money. Then they'll actually wait till the end of January. That's an option you have. Just let us know in a way you want us to go.
That's a no brainer.
Don't wanna wait till the, kind of figured that, but I don't wanna make, I wanted to let you know you did have that option. We've gotten the clearance. We submitted the paperwork for it. Any questions on the six fifty? Like I said, when we have to go to design approval, if we're gonna pay through, it's still paid through the green way. But if you want the grant to pay for the design as it's being done, then we would need to wait till the environmental release was supposed to reach January.
Council agree with that? It's you.
The twenty twenty-three.
Well, we knew that already.
Alright, so you wanna wait till the grant will pay for it as it goes? In the environmental, I just wanted to pass that by you, let, let you know you did have that option now that you didn't have ninety or sixty days, or whatever.
David, before you start the next one, wouldn't be any issue with extending that grant ending date as far as.
No, it shouldn't be. As long as we are, by before, like, three months before the ending date, that we're under construction, we're showing we're making progress, there shouldn't be any issues. They have not, have not, not allowed an extension on that kind of project.
Okay, just so I'm clear, this is twenty twenty-four ending date, but you're saying end of January twenty twenty-three.
The ending date for the grant is January twenty twenty-four.
Okay, but there's not.
Before the environmental release, we can go to design, it'll be January twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And that's just an estimate based on the information we have uh, and the issues that have come up with the brownfields or the soil issues and the explosion zone. The second grant we're working with, it's called the CBG D R Disaster Recovery. It's grant number M oh one oh seven. Uh, we're working on the environmental review right now. On that one, it'll be another additional ninety to hundred twenty days. That's a newer grant that we had with the neighborhood. That grant is the amount of one million, six hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars. Once again, there's no local match. The grant ending date on that project is May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. You got the same option on that one. If you decide to go forward with the uh, design, we got the release, but you would have to get paid for it upfront and then get reimbursed. And once, you know, we got releases of funds. If you wait till we get the release of funds, you can pay for the design once it's being done with the grant. So, let's, I just wanna know what that option is out there. Uh, that grant has installed ten new fixed emergency electrical generators at the sanitary sewer lift station. Uh, you don't have emergency electrical generators now. And then a skater system called Works. The eradication installation of fifteen hundred linear feeder sanitary sewer force main. Realign the flow from a shallow manhole in the intersection of Dawkins and Sapp Avenue. An additional involvement, one sanitary sewer manhole, so also pipe relocation, or the addition of two other manholes are also associated with the pipe relocation. So, we should have environmental release on that one, approximately hundred twenty days. We can actually start getting the design started. And there's a lot of steps to these environmental reviews. It sounds like a simple task, but it's not. There's advertisements requiring notifications to all uh, government agencies, notifications to tribal, tribes, and resorts. You ain't coming to on that one, Bill?
I don't think so. Although, I would expect that if we have the same issue with the belly tanks at, on the mitigation, because it's generators and some of them are in the same location, we're not the same issue with the belly tanks again, but
Yeah, really.
We'll come up with a resolute, uh, plan to address it, so.
Is it undergrounding the tank or burn? Or I think are in the options we had. We'll have to figure out which one direction we're going. Alright, any question on the first two from page one? Page two. You recently received notice of award for the CBG mitigation grant, MT one one three five. That grant amount is two million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. That's for the sanitary sewer wastewater treatment facility and the fluid disposal restoration mitigation project. The scope of work is rerotation of Harvey components, the city sanitary sewer wastewater treatment plant, to make improvements to the fluid disposal portion of the system. Placing telemetry system with new cellular skater system with wastewater treatment plant, the fluid disposal facility, and so on, to replace emergency electrical generator in wastewater treatment plant. That one, you do not have a contract yet from the, an executed contract. You will have to advertise for administration engineering on that project. Those, for those services. Any question on that project? That's one of your newer projects that hasn't gotten a contract yet with the state.
I suspect that kind of answers your question earlier too about where you're gonna get reimbursed for work done.
And they're not, even if you had further along, long, if you didn't advertise that work, now you've got an intex. That's why I know, I'm just looking at it real quick. Um, what Fred's saying is, you were not, that's not a reversible project. So, you, if anything you've done prior to this project to get approved for plant specs, the bidding, you will not get reimbursed for for prior work at the plant. Is that not your, do you have a different understanding? Okay. Just wanna make sure that.
I, I didn't have a question. But once the contracts go to executed, then would work after that time?
Yeah, any work that you're gonna pay through that grant's gonna be all bid together.
Okay.
So, anything after that, but it would have to be part of that contract, pretty much, the scope or. What happens, once we, you get your environmental release, you get your design completed, you'll submit that design to the state. The state will review it, and then anything under that design they approve, you can do under that grant. It has to be bid out according to CBG. You got a current policy for CBG that you'll pass way back a few years ago. It's still current. You have to follow that current policy. We'll walk you through all that, but if you hire us, that's probably. Um, any questions on the mitigation?
Because we don't have the, the funding yet. We don't have a, a ending date on that.
No, we don't have any, we don't have a grant contract yet. It's, it's in the grant contract. Usually they're thirty, thirty-six months, a lot of them, but the new ones, mitigation's, it's a, like a special cycle. So, I don't know if that's a, we'll. But I will get you that once we find out the contract when you're ending dates. Uh, the next one is CBG C V or coronavirus brand community center. We've not received a contract on that one yet either from the state. It's an amount nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars. Here in the city's looking at using CBG C V assistance to prevent the city community center located twenty-eight oh eight Yellow Jacket Drive. Provide clean, safe, and handicapped accessible location for residents to receive testing and vaccinations. That was the point of it. You had to relate it back to the COVID. Kitchen, uh, so kitchen may utilize preparing meals for homebound persons tested positive. Improvements to the building will include necessary handicap accessibility replacements in the roof, repair replacements in HVAC and electrical, replacement of necessary plumbing and fixtures, renovation of restrooms to be ADA or American Disabilities Act compliant, upgrade kitchens, repair, prep and paint walls, replace ceiling, repair, replace flooring, install fire sprinkler system, replace interior and exterior doors, and then renovation of building will provide local access on testing vaccination services. That's where that one is. Same thing with that one. Once you get a contract, then you will advertise for administration engineering services. Any questions on that C V project?
Yeah, on that, I have that particular one right there. Whenever this was established, that number was established. And I know it was established through the CBG, but did they take any, any consideration as to all this stuff is increasing and that work that has been scoped out right there?
You can't get.
You're not gonna get that done for that price.
What we'll do is, when we get to that point, I know in pre, D E O has been more lenient on letting you drop down the scope or address less items under the scope. Uh, once we get to that point, we'll, we'll.
You know, because that, that roof, the roof itself is gonna cost near about that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because that roof is one of those sandproof roofs, and unless we can get it approved some way or another differently, because that used to be an old gym.
Yeah.
Um, you're, you're looking at spending. I know on the old, the gym that's there now, it was all, a little over a million dollars just to get it replaced. And that's not gonna take care of what that's gonna cost.
What we'll do is, when you get to that point with getting environmental release and we know exactly where our, our costs are gonna be as in, or have a better idea to be able to assess it, we don't work at that time, right? Then we'll present it to the state and they'll tell us, yes, you were taking it, no, they're not. Usually, this project's a little different. I know usually they don't allow you to go back and ask for additional funds. But I know a couple of these, and I don't know if it was the same grant program, they had some funds left and they asked, you know, if you can ask a question, they'll bill you rent.
Right.
You can only say, we got this price, if there is any amount available. A lot of times there's not, but it's still an option. Any other questions on the C V? The community center renovation?
Did you do the cost assessment on that?
Okay. And then the FERDA, Florida Recreation Development, that's the fifty thousand dollars that Candace was calling her previously. Um, construction ending date for that one is you have to have all construction done by April twenty twenty-four. And you only have about a thousand dollars left in the construction cost and your, the quote you do have right now for the, not construction cost, non-construction cost. Quote you have right now for the survey, it's around fifteen thousand. That may be something, you know, you won't be penalized if you decide on to move forward that grant and be obligated. Uh, that may be an option for you.
So, there's no penalty on that. There's no penalty on that.
There's no penalty on that grant for to say, we're good, we can't get it done for the amount allowed. And we'll walk with it. At some point, if that's, and I'll give clarification, if that's the avenue they're gonna take with the survey, every product you do for that park, you're gonna have to do, you're gonna do a survey at some point. So.
I have a question, Mr. Fox. In discussion earlier, it was said, I thought it was said that they would not accept a two thousand and nineteen survey. On this paper, it says not two ninety-eight.
I think when Fred messaged me, it was, it was a, by a twenty-year-old survey.
Uh, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
It was my version, Fred, when he messaged me.
That would be more understandable as to why they're not accepting it rather than a two thousand and nineteen.
It is my two ninety-eight. I typed this up. I don't know where I put it. I'll pop my head.
What's the point of asking for a survey after weeks too?
They, and they call it an ASBIL. It shows what you put in place since the, so you do an original survey that shows what's there now. And then you do an ASBIL that shows what you put in. Same as when you close out, you've got invoice and you're getting reimbursed. You've got to show that we're in location of the option put in.
Is that.
That is my fault though. Sorry about that.
That have to be assigned and sealed by the surveyor?
Yes, it has to be assigned and sealed, so.
And then, and then pass it down there this eighteen year, which can be.
Sorry about the day issue. That, that was my fault.
No, but I have another question. There was, um, that sportplex was updated. There was a grant to update that sportplex in two thousand.
I can't remember the date. There was.
I was walking, it was between two thousand, two thousand five and two thousand and seven almost, maybe two thousand six. Wouldn't there have been a survey done at that time? It was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, I don't know. The FERDA included mostly work, have a core two hundred thousand. You have the survey. We'll look and see. I'm just gonna buy a R O file.
Yeah, well, but I also.
But if they have a R O file, then.
Handle that, so I was just.
Yeah, I'll look and see if we do.
Okay.
Um, if it was required. Then we'll set that to, but if not, and that was my fault this day, sorry about that. Nineteen ninety-eight's the survey date. So, the, the options would be, I guess you still get some additional prizes or try to. It's hard trying to get anybody to give a price or anything like that.
Yeah, one person out of all that she contacted.
That would be the next, I did, the next step would be to get a price in the survey, figure out. If you can get any cheaper, anything over a hundred thousand dollars would be a cost to the city, because we pay up the grant.
And we have to.
And you have to also do a final survey, your ASBIL. On top of that. That's something you'll need to think about. And one of the options, like I said, would be either do the survey, we move forward, or try to find an older one, two thousand and five, I'll look into that. And then also, uh, deobligate the funds to close out the grant.
Yes, sir. It's gotta be between two thousand and five and two thousand.
So.
So, because we were, it was while we were still in the old building on the highway, and it was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. But I, I was saying that they would require the survey at that point.
Yeah, well, and that was the funding source. If it was two thousand, if there was two hundred fifty thousand, it was part of the CBG grant, they wouldn't require the survey. But it, it's usually a FERDA, the most they would do would be two hundred thousand, or when they did a waiver, where you could do two hundred thousand value matched, but that was a match that we could do.
Well, I do know that, um, Fox Enterprises was involved in that.
I'll, I'll look that a little bit. We got, we keep our file. We got a whole warehouse of files we keep back there.
And there's not a deadline on this at the full draw.
FERDA, we, we seem to know what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Uh, he did talk to Candace. He said, um, if y'all decide to deobligate the funds, we understand, and we'll just wait for a big variety administrations, we can deobligate it all and not have to. and we'll just wait for our big first variety administrations, we can deobligate it all, we're not out pocketing it. I think that's what Lee Wester told Candace.
Yeah. That y'all just sign up to do it, because it could be as much as twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand. Well, I mean, a thousand's gonna come out, so if it's a fifteen thousand dollar survey, and we can pay a thousand out of the grant, that leaves fourteen thousand, but the next time we have it done, it's fifteen thousand, because there's not, so it could be twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
Out of pocket.
That's just something you need to, I just wanna give you options.
Yes, sir, I understand.
He did say if he decided to deobligate, we all understand, I'm not so ready, you need to back out. Deobligating that grant, it'll penalize the FERDA, and we would wait for it.
Yeah, he did say that, he would wait for fees.
So, I guess, see what we can find out and put it on for the workshop.
Okay.
When's the workshop?
The first Monday of December, I don't know, I don't know the date. Next of four?
You don't want me to be here, just give you an answer for that?
Probably the fifth of December.
Either way, it's fine, we'll just let it happen.
I think if we have that answer, I mean, if it's convenient for you to come, if not, it's, it's on your answer.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here for you, I'm here for you, but I don't mind coming.
Is, is that the...
I'll find out the answer, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Bill, do you have any comments or questions?
Number three, bus drivers requesting the community center for their Christmas party.
Yeah, they wanted to know if, they're trying to have a Christmas party for the, all the bus drivers, and they wanted to know if there was any way that the fee could be waived. It's in December.
They didn't say when?
Uh, the, yeah, send something for this. Uh, hang on, let me look at my calendar, I'll do you. The seventeenth.
It's not, nothing's scheduled for that, it isn't.
We don't have anything scheduled that day. I don't know, also, does the city still do on a Christmas? Y'all used to do a Christmas party, I wasn't sure.
I think we usually, it's done through the fire department, when it's done now.
Okay, so I, I just wanna make sure we weren't booking that date for anything, okay.
We, we had to warn Candace last year, we just got a volunteer.
Yeah, they've always got a volunteer to sit and deal with them.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that this is anything that we necessarily need to vote on, is it? We just can agree, if everybody agrees to it. Does anybody have an issue with it?
No, just to weigh the fee, weigh the fee. You need to vote on that?
We do, okay. Do, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the Vernon bus driver's request for the community center to use for free for their Christmas party on December seventeenth, the twenty twenty-two? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried. Number four is a new grant for the tank at the wastewater treatment plant, the sewer, um, receivable.
The task orders in that stuff I gave y'all this afternoon to review from Dale? He's the one that's still working, you know, has had a hand in working on it up until this point.
And we have to answer by, as you said, stated earlier, we have to answer by December the ninth, as to what we're going to do, if we're moving ahead or not, if that is.
Well, yeah, so, I'd be worried, I think if you don't have to be worried about December the ninth, it'll probably go a little crazy.
Um, who thinks the business is, uh, like such a, that we don't have to, it doesn't have to, it would be at a different time period?
And she did bring it to you, I don't know.
And he said that's a task order that he sent over if we wanted to approve it tonight, because we've gotta do something by the ninth.
And we can camp on it, I mean, we can just, I can just do that, an hour or two, that's just separate.
I've got the, um, I've got it in here, it's this one, I just don't have it.
That's too much what we got right now, but...
Where y'all getting these from and that? I don't see these from that, I don't even read some emails.
It's gotta be executed from, or done from the beginning of when it was sent, and...
So, the email to Candace from? So, the email from, uh, grant, DWRA grant info, MDP, to Candace, says, "To draft an agreement, we'll need you to provide the following information to this email by December nineteenth."
That was just an email to Clark, and so I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in your package. I just put the, the actual attachment in your package.
That's right, I was looking for it on this, and I'm going, I, I don't see where y'all got...
There's a lot of emails that go back. Because we are at seven grants right now.
Michelle, do you have any?
I mean, just looking at some of the questions that they're asking, it seems like it, it would not be a problem for us to use, um, a continuing services contract for the design. I don't see anything that says specifically that we have to bid that out. So, unless, I would say unless you get...
Yeah, not having gotten anything.
Anything from the state otherwise.
And so that's what Dale and I just talked about, since he'd already been late on that, that he just went ahead and prepared that.
For what's worth, other municipalities that have legislative appropriations that I've worked with, they, where you're doing a continuing services contract.
And that's kind of the purpose of having one, is so that you can afford it and ask for work out.
Stream line, but...
Yeah.
All right, well, what's the will of council? We won't move forward, I need a motion.
Motion, really grant for the, did that, the tank?
And the waste... Second receiving unit.
Yeah, for the...
Set it in, receiving station.
Second, discussion. All in favor? Uh, motion carried. That was wrong. Number five, transfer cancel First Federal. Candace?
Okay, Becky and I talked about this, and I'm just bringing it forward. Mr. Gary designed this tonight, by the way. Um, we have, and it doesn't matter to me, I'm that's presenting, just so y'all know. We have funds at First Federal and at Regions. We don't do very much with Regions. Regions has been difficult, as far as, like I said, everybody's gotta go up there for signature changes. The original people that opened the account need to be up there for signature changes. It would be easier to have it all at one, but it might not be the best idea to have it all at one, that's just whatever y'all wanna do. Um, so I wanted to bring that to y'all. Also, I didn't get her to, so, the clerk's name is on all the debit cards, she said, when, when I was getting all this done, and I don't want my name on a bunch of debit cards floating around. So, she said we could do a credit card instead, and it would...
City of Vernon.
It would have City of Vernon. And, and it wouldn't be me with a bunch of debit cards floating around. Not that I don't, not that the guys are gonna do anything, but my name on a debit card that whoever's using, I just didn't prefer that.
They used to be City of Vernon. It didn't have anybody's name on it.
The one I have, it's got her name on it.
It did have somebody's name on it. So, I would just prefer to have a credit card that we could, you know, pay off every month, that didn't have my name on it.
That's what it used to be, everything, gas card, all the credit cards.
It didn't take City of Vernon on it, that was it. And then the, i- if that's acceptable, I mean, y'all could assign on that, and then, also, because we have all, just something that might be a good idea, because we are, we're going into all these grants, and they are reimbursement grants. The city may wanna look at doing a line of credit or something with the bank, so that we can actually have operating funds. And I, and I did speak to Tiffany, she's the one I talked to at First Federal, and she did also say, if we moved everything, that we would get a better rate on everything.
And I believe that she's also the one that I spoke with, because when we had to change over from the previous part, she came up, and, um, she brought everything to be signed. I know I came up at a different time than Ms. Quinn did to sign everything, but she also mentioned to me, at that point, that she would like to have all of our accounts that, that First Federal would have. I don't know which specific account she was talking about, um, but she did say that there were some of our accounts that could be interest-bearing. If we swap with them. Um, my only question is, Michelle, do you see an issue with having all of our accounts at one bank?
Not in this day and age. Now, you have online access to all your accounts. You know, and like it's...
Availability would be better.
Yeah, so that, the, I mean, your, your risk with having everything had in one place would've been years ago, when you just got one bank statement a month, and only one person had access to it. Nowadays, we don't really have that issue.
I have a scan to build up that way.
I don't have a problem.
Can I have a motion to move all of our, move all of the City of Vernon's accounts to First Federal?
Make a motion to move everything to First Federal.
And have the credit cards changed over to City of Vernon instead of a specific name? Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried.
Do you want me to find out about the line of credit for the Vernon?
Yes, ma'am. Number six, Jimmy.
Only good news, Jimmy.
Second that.
Only good news. Uh, you know, we got to have a make a decision, we're getting, uh, sending a letter to DEP to do it for court about the inspection. And, I, I'm assuming y'all wanna write a letter, I'll just send you what you need to send them, but you gotta make a decision about some of the claims that's gotta be done. And I'll talk to y'all at the last meeting, so, and y'all should have some, write quotes.
Y'all have a list with quotes, and these are the things that need to be done. If it has a little dash mark with that, then that's got to be done for DEP, right?
I can't remember the...
I think that's how we did it.
I couldn't find my list, so I'm having to go back through. So, they got this?
The first thing I've noticed is scrolling through these prices. First of all, am I correct, and everything that's in here, as far as quotes, is what's got to be done?
Yes, there's probably some, and some things that aren't quoted in that. One of those, the eleven thousand dollar one from AAG?
Yeah.
We've already done.
And so we've got to pay that, or we've already paid that?
Uh, there's a check here for it.
I've got that.
Yeah, and that, but that's also deducted from, I gave y'all lists of the accounts, and, uh, deducted that check from outstanding checks that aren't clear.
Okay, so...
You jump out the list you just gave me, and start to look, give it down, I'll play it, it's definitely...
It was a new thing that I added up there, Ms. Quinn.
Okay, we've all got lists in front of us, right? If you've got it, run to him, start him, he'll...
It's not in the packet, it was the after, or it was on the top, and I can see it.
All right, the number one, the, uh, air pressure blowers repaired. They were aware of that, at the inspection, and wanted us to give something. Quote our guy is, uh, nine thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars.
They, they want you to give them something on us having this done?
What was that amount, Jimmy, because you got my list?
Nine thousand eight hundred forty, I'm just gonna round it up for the y'all.
All right.
Right, then the next one is, uh, the filter. Prepared. The filter's total, we have a lot of that, uh, the parts to do that already. But there's one part missing, and it is three thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars.
Which one is that?
That's for filter.
Who's got a little one?
Three thousand what?
Four hundred thirty.
Three hundred, three thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars. Now, you probably got a thousand twelve hundred dollars of the parts that started getting paid for that goes along with this. At this point, we possibly change a, a little bit of money, because I've asked them to line up the other motors for the purchase when they put all those back in. But we're not talking a thousand dollars.
Is any of this, that's on the list, going to be covered in that grant?
I believe so. I mean, I want to make sure I'm answering the question you're asking. I believe that the work was included in the grant scope initially, but I don't believe that if you bought it today, you would be able to be reimbursed by that grant. That's what they were talking about, is that essentially you have to bid that market, and that's part of that project, to reimburse you.
So, basically, if we were not, um, in the situation that we are in with DEP, we could ultimately wait on this till the grant came?
I, you have to answer that.
Um, not necessarily. Everything is a no.
Unless, I, I understand something's broken down, but I'm saying...
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Otherwise...
Everything's in length, like, they, they have a backup for everything. And basically, you're one, running on one, but your backups are already gone, in both of these instances.
No, I, I haven't had a conversation with DEP, and you might know it better, but you might be able to say, we're gonna do A, B, C, and D, however, we're not gonna do it until we get this grant, which we expect to get in July, or whenever it matters.
And you got an award letter, you got a copy of an award letter.
When we talk about, I mean, give me a, a date that this would be fixed.
It's probably a year by the time it's designed and did.
I mean, no, I'm talking about looking around, we're talking here, right? Okay.
I can send them a letter in development. All they can do is say no, and then you're right back where you are right now, at the...
Well, my, I mean, I, you know, I want to fix, and I'm sure as everybody here does, but my concern is, is that... I don't know where we're gonna come up with money to fix it.
Yeah, and like I said, you got an award letter from DEO for that project, so they know it's in place.
Yeah.
And I think it would be, I'm just, I, you tell me, I'm not, you know, in your position, but I think it would be worth it, try, if y'all are looking at it, at least send them the letter, and with us, with a proposed timeframe, and...
See what they say.
And Jimmy, I know that you're, you're looking at this on a car house, I, I, I understand that. I, I know the position that you're in, and...
We just had something happen this afternoon that puts us right back to where, what I'm talking about. Spray field pump, we're gonna talk about it in a minute, which is brand new, it's still on the one before they chilled it up. It went down. And the way, there's other things broke out there, we can only use one pump at a time, man. You know, there's a lot of danger in that. You have to back it up.
I understand that completely.
Listen, it doesn't matter if y'all do this or not. If y'all want to go that way, personally, I don't think you would like, but I'll definitely write a letter and tell them if, if, if you'll give me some good numbers. If you're telling me a year and a half, then that's what I will tell them.
I give you my opinion. I think we need to see if we're ready to actually go quick, quick as we can. Even since we're already flooded on one egg and something, if it goes out, it caused the plant to go down, we're gonna be right back under that.
Well, and that, that was what I was trying to say, is I know that, you know, Jimmy's doing his level best to keep everything up and running forth and I, I appreciate it and I, I wanna fix everything down there. And we keep asking him to just fix what's, what's limping and.
It's all limping. We know it's all beating me big.
But, you know, three line offs.
But can we just have the priorities?
And what I'm saying is, is if we can get, because we do have that approval letter, if we can get some time on it, come up with the figures that we've gotta have anyway on the money. And then Jimmy said, hey, you've gotta spend this now, you've gotta spend this now, and let's do it that way and try to, instead of trying to cover everything that they're.
I have, I have no problem as long as y'all understand that if we send them a letter on the air compressor blowers, right, if, if, if they agree to that, they say, okay, that's fine, we see moving forward with it. And February, the drive goes out of that blower. There are thirty-sixty days, no air. You're gonna be in a jiffy.
Well, I understand your plan. How long will it run that egg?
Less than a day. Nothing works. I mean, you gotta.
That is the plan.
There, there's number one, is the, the most important thing that needs to be done at the moment?
To me, yes. I don't, let's get to the end of, let's get to the end of it and then let me, cause I, I'm not reading all the way down. Okay, the filter, you've already bought and you're already in the parts, so you know, whatever you wanna do on that. The check valve at spray field, you can do whatever you want to on it, but understand you can only use one pump at a time. You're actually having to turn one pump off, valve off, to keep it from uh recirculating.
So we have to send a man out here from now?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's like your hundred dollars.
Um, to me, that would be.
Round it off, saving one hundred.
That would be, a lover on the total boat, because if they check it every day, you'll know you're having a problem and the floods we got now right over the week. The next one, belt press is already going to be. And it's operational. The fan at the plant. I think you've already worked that. The glowing thing, you've already worked that.
Yeah.
The two fans that it works, yeah, they're working.
One of them is for the oil. I can still have the door to you, cause that would have fallen out the wall with him.
And just so y'all know, that was like two hundred dollars. That wasn't two thousand.
The new well, wells one and two, communication repaired. I mean, I just wanna know what y'all gonna do. If your well, if you're running on that, it's doing.
This is still a internet issue, online issue?
I'm being told not. They didn't think of. You're gonna have to hire somebody to come in here, Jake. Okay?
Okay, that's a different grant, what that's for. That's, that's in the neighborhood evaluation process. The phone guy come out here that day and I was living, and he said, I was living two more things in the records.
That's what the phone man said? I don't know.
No, 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 he said it has signal.
He said.
Yeah, he said that it has signal all the way there. That's all I gave, what he thought.
Y'all agreed me to get somebody to come out and that's when it told you the phone line was bad. Y'all do, as far as I can tell, they, they never built it for them, so you had to, had to spend any money on it yet. But you will have to get somebody, get somebody to check that part. If you're sure that they did.
You want the phone man to get up with Jason? Are you asking me to get the phone man to get up with Jason?
No, no, he's already been there.
Yeah, he's already been there.
Your next step is to get somebody.
Gotta look at what?
The communication system.
Okay.
And you say communication systems, are you talking about, is there a circuit board in there that, that communicates with the internet? I mean.
No, this, this, this all runs on phone lines, okay? It's a literary system. It's just tied to a dedicated pair of phone lines. It closes contact at the time. It closes contact at well, basically come on, then when it's satisfied, it opens, it opens, it's revolutionary, I mean, I don't even buy you them anymore.
Now, we've, we've had, we've had this conversation about this before. Okay, so the thing is, is who's responsible for that phone?
AT&amp;T.
Then how come they didn't fix it when they were here?
They said they was fixing it. They said it was fixed. That's what they're telling us.
That's what, that's what they, I told them.
But now, all of a sudden, we coming up again, two months later.
No, it's never been fixed.
And the, and the phone line's not fixed.
No.
But how come it wasn't brought up at the next meeting?
Well, I've been handling on this for a long time.
But then how come we're waiting still?
It was called up the next meeting.
I mean, we, we keep procrastinating on things and it continues to cause a problem somewhere. We need to quit procrastinating. If we're going to have wells for the city to run, then we need to get this stuff taken care of. If it's not gonna cost ten thousand dollars to get the communications fixed and it's gonna be a new line, then get the doggone line put in.
Well, they didn't put a new line in. They came, said their line was good, it had, in our equipment, is that not what?
So who do we get to come and look at the equipment?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Who do we get to look at?
They, it's the only person I know locally.
A, AIG?
AIG.
AAG.
You're doing business with them, right?
And it's twelve hundred dollars.
But we gotta have it.
Yeah, well, that, that's the first I heard how much it is, so.
Well, y'all approved twelve hundred dollars. What I understand, he didn't deal y'all.
Okay. So, so.
So he's, w- wait a minute, if he's come out, his, what has he said?
He came out originally and said, it's the phone line.
Well, that's why I'm saying to y'all.
And then Gary got AT&amp;T and he says, the phone line is fixed now.
That's what I'm saying, that you want us to get a phone line again, phone guy again, give it y'all.
No, no, the phone, the phone line, the AT&amp;T needs to be here when the AAG is here.
If y'all can make that happen, I probably can.
I mean, because if, if, if we can't, then they, they, those are the two people that need to communicate, not us, because I mean, un- unless he's got something written down on a piece of paper saying, this is the issue right here that you need to fix to AAG, then it's not gonna get fixed. I mean, the only way to fix something, when you go to a mechanic, is to tell that mechanic what's wrong with it and then the mechanic fixes it. The same thing with that right there. If that, if that technician is there and they're working together, then they can get something fixed. Other than that, you're blowing smoke in the wound.
If you can, if you, if, if y'all can get them scheduled together, I'm sure I can have, I can get that, that certain time, but I doubt you're gonna get it together. And, you know, AT&amp;T was responsible to the pedestal, the pedestal load, and then they won't touch anything else. Before they, they came, shorted out the relay, everything came on there.
Because so we, we've got twelve hundred dollars that was approved to be paid for AAG. He done nothing, so he didn't charge us anything. Okay, so now the AT&amp;T has said that it is somewhere in the communications as AAG been called back. Why that twelve hundred dollars has been approved to look at this?
That's what I mentioned right there.
Call them back?
Yeah, it's called.
Yeah, so bring that?
Yes.
The, the next one, the airbag valve on the well three, I just let them know it's leaking, if you wanna wait on that, you look at her about six hundred twenty-five dollars.
What was that one, Jimmy? I don't have the list.
Air release valve.
Number eight.
It's eight, yeah.
How about it?
Six hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay. On my paper, there are things that are marked that are supposed to be. Be required and then there are things that are not marked, so.
Right, that's just, like I said, I'm just going to from the top to bottom.
No, ma'am, the ones that are marked are things that we, that we need to.
Those are the DEP things that need to be done.
That need to be paid for now or requested to wait until the grant?
Well, I see what you're saying now. Fourteen to eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Jason, how much is that? I don't see any major money at all in that. Probably a hundred bucks for that gasket.
That's what we're talking about.
And um I don't know what it would cost for a welder to come over that line. See, DEP, the guy come, took pictures, everything, he had put every little thing in there. I'm just telling y'all what he found and that's what I wanna answer to. And I did throw the oil in there, just roll and forget it.
Jason, what stuff have you already been taking care of? That's on this list right here from fourteen, pre- eighteen.
Yeah, I took care of a little, just a little stuff.
No, I haven't done nothing that, but it won't be nothing in there.
We talked about it all good. I asked him how long it take that, have that done? He said thirty days. That's what I was telling him, but you know, I'm, I'm sure that'd be an issue.
Yeah, get started. Because if you don't, this gonna come back and divide us in the book.
Yeah, I know.
Will it, it'll probably go a long way in a letter to you?
The nineteen, you can take that off of this. That was his suggestion.
It would probably go a long way in the, uh, letter to DEP requesting a time to get our grant into if you would take care of those small things as soon as possible.
Jason, I'm gonna say this too, if you need help, I'm gonna set a hand. Now, I know another should do right now. I can't take a day off of my work.
Well, I gotta do, I'll tell you what, since you said that, I gotta do the gaskets, so I need help.
Okay, you tell me what day. And not the day before, because I need to. I had to clear my schedule personally.
This thing's pretty big, right? These tracker and everything like this.
Okay. I mean, it's not hard, it's just you need more hands, you need a couple hands on this. Okay.
So you're basically, if y'all say fourteen to eighteen, thirty days, I'll tell you to do that. You already got the fan, we put that in the thirty days.
Have they come in? Have, have they come in yet, Candace?
No, not yet. It said by Friday and we're not gonna be here Friday, so.
The check valves, air compressor, filter, and air compressor, yeah. Y'all wanna go with the air compressor, that's near about ten thousand dollars. I'll write a letter, just get a copy of y'all's approval and see if they'll.
They got the filter, that was included in the six, though? I believe it was.
I know, I know that. It's been there for a while. But, I mean, and the same thing with check valves, y'all might do that. Because if you, if you'll be guilty, check it, when you see a problem, explosion, the day comes to, there's a problem and you've got a little bit of time on the flood chain to, to react to it. Flood comes up, you won't have. Now the filter. I mean, if you can afford to do that, cause you've already got half the parts involved. If you don't want to, I can put that in there.
That's the, the number two, right?
I think it's, I can't remember what I said, thirty?
You've already, part of the parts have already been purchased, so this will take care of it.
The thirty-four, thirty-three?
Actually, like I said, yeah, thirty-four, thirty-three, and like I say, you can vary a little bit with labor because I've asked them to line all the motors. And then it's basically measured for operation. But this has been set for quite a while. But if you want me to put that on there, I will.
No, I'm gonna add this to number nine. I'm motion to approve thirty-four hundred and thirty-three dollars. What it is, filter pump, it's the filter, right?
Yes.
This count's broken without. And yet, I, I don't know who drafted, if you drafted or Ken stressed or whatever, but.
It's totally up to y'all. I can either, those are the stuff you give or send to kids right there.
What I'm saying is, getting the things that you think can be taken care of in the thirty days, the little stuff, and also request on um some time for the grant that we've been approved for. And see what they say to that, and in the meantime, we'll do what we've been doing and deal with the rest of it as.
You want me to write a letter or you got to write your own?
You normally do, you normally do it, don't you?
Um, but.
We could do it together and.
Okay.
I mean, I want, I'd want you to put it on your letterhead, even if I write it.
This count's broken without?
Yes.
And I missed one, that, that other didn't land in.
Yeah, you said something about that had to be done, did you?
I done it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So you can put that in there, that, that's been done as well?
Yeah.
Um, can I ask something? That first one, I think it's the air compressor blower, that's really important. Is that gonna come from AAG?
It would, it would if they would have approved it, but they didn't, they want to see it, they'll let us wait.
Okay, but maybe we can talk about that later, see what we can figure out with that. And then I'll ask the council.
And then the spray field check valves, we're gonna do that the same way, is that correct? Cause that, no, that's not in that grant. You just found that was bad when they put the new motor on two months ago. It's been down so long.
That's the seventy-one hundred dollars?
We went to, we went out to the spray field. We had some work at the spray field. I thought we were replumbing the spray field. I can find out.
I, I, like I said, I didn't know they were, I don't, as far as I know, nobody knew they were bad. We knew we had a bad pump and that's in there.
Yeah.
But check valve, we just found out two months ago they were bad. And that they're in there, that's great, right?
And the way, but so vague, you want that? Right. At this point, we lost pump, but we have the pump.
But I need to write, I'm gonna write this letter, I need to write this letter. The individual, writing, right, cause I'm gonna be out of pocket. No, I'm sorry, but I'm wrong. I need to write.
This, this week?
October half of this. Cause I'm gonna be out of work. Two days next week, I'll only get back on the first, and if I have a different time than that.
Yeah, but you can go ahead and sign the bill.
So if y'all just give me that, that letter.
Yeah, Candace, you have a copy of that October tenth, uh, award agreement? If not, I can send you, email you one, it's not, I'll email you one tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. The war?
I'll tell, I think it's October tenth or eighteen, it was an award agreement for the uh sewer upgrade.
Yeah, I think I forwarded it.
Yeah, he sent us a copy of it, I just want, he's gonna need a copy for the.
Okay. Yeah, I can get it one.
No, they all might write it for you, but I, I need, don't, he didn't do it for, for me too.
Is that one oh seven, David? Is it N one oh seven?
I think so. It's the one that just, you just got a letter.
No.
It's dated from October, but I think you just sent it this week.
Uh, yes.
That's all.
Thank you, Jimmy. Number seven, this board is.
I got a copy of it, just let me give it to her.
I have no idea what you're talking about. So, Kim? Never mind, okay, number eight. Can I have a motion to approve the adjustment for, uh, the water at twenty-eight sixty Dalton Street? Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I'm with twenty-one.
One oh three fifty.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Number nine, do I have a motion to approve three thousand twenty-three dollars for the disc filler?
How many was that?
Second? Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Does anybody else have anything before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Did we take one of those lights, one of those side doors?
I called Gulf Power, I know Jason's working on it, but I called Gulf Power also, or Florida Power and Light.
I got every pole from the bridge to Ms. Quinn's house, I got every tag right down, I'm not calling.
How many of that trench, Tom? I can't put every pole that way, we ain't gonna, no, we ain't gotta go back. And I go ahead and order it, so, yeah. And I give that to whoever wants, if you want, I'm giving you.
Yeah, how many total was there, do you remember? Well, they're billing us for like a hundred and fourteen, I think, it's about fourteen hundred dollars a month, and that's why I called them, because if we've got ninety, we don't need to be paying for a hundred and fourteen.
Get her, get her what you got, so she can.
And they said they would come out, that it would take them two weeks, but I'm trying to cut where, where we can.
I mean, it's bad, whatever it is.
But you had time to go around and check all the ones that are out?
Well, that's, my, my, my thing is, on the back streets, um, it's, how about, I mean, I know like my, like on my street, mine is on my building. But then you go down to my mama's, and.
That's on city.
It's on cities.
All of those, so.
All those on the road.
We got a map.
Do we, do we?
Okay.
We got a map, I, I just, I just found it.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Discussion. All in favor?